Really brief introduction of all the folks who are here on the panel. And then we're going to go into some questions and answers. There were some questions and answers solicited online. And I've got a stack of them right there. And there's also folks who will take cards. If you have a question, we'll try and get every question as they come in and try and answer them as succinctly as possible. So just for the record, I'm Scott Kawasaki. I'm the state senator representing Fairbanks, Fort Wainwright, and a little Badger on the west side of town. I'm joined here by several of my colleagues who will introduce themselves, as well as two of our local mayors. I wanted to say that there are some other folks representing other offices. We have Bernard Eoto from Representative Will Stapp's office. He's the west side of town. We have, who else?
East side.
Sorry, east side of town, that other side. We have, we have Graham, who's working for Speaker's Office, working. He's just here. He's working. And we also have, who else is here? I think that's, oh, and we have Joe. Joe Hayes, Chief of Staff to my office. Jenna is working also in our office and working particularly on this event.
Stuart.
Stuart, yeah, sorry, Stuart Relay, also way back, working for Representative Carrick. Seneca Roach, working for Representative DiBert. Did I miss any staff? Okay, well, I just wanted to just say, thanks for being here before I pass the microphone off to whoever wants to go next. It's somehow worked this way, but it's all the guys who are sitting on this side, all the women who are sitting on this side. We will defer to, we defer to the three here.
Oh, yay, me. Good evening, everyone. Can you, there we go. Thank you all so much for being here. When I saw the snow in the forecast, I was like, oh, boy. But this is wonderful to see so many faces on a perfect Fairbanks day. It's really great to see the snow and to see that there's cold weather coming. I appreciate that. Cold is good for us here in the north. Hello, my name is Maxine DiBert. As most of you know, I represent downtown Fairbanks here in my district. I grew up here in Fairbanks. It's an honor to represent the town that raised me. I went to public schools here, went to UAF, and actually taught at Denali Elementary School about three blocks away from here, third grade, for 22 and a half years. And for 22 and a half years, I brought my third graders to this library. So it's really great to be back here, going to the Berry Room, and just, this is such a wonderful place to host the event tonight. So much history here. A little bit about me, my, I'm Koiakahn Athabaskan. My native name is Nishdunlo, which means strong runner. That was given to me by my grandmother, Cecilia Johnson. Cecilia and her husband, James Johnson, were my dad's parents. And they grew up, they were, they grew up on the Cochrines, the village of Cochrines, Alaska, on the Yukon River. My grandparents on my mother's side are Einar Anderson from Sweden, came up here to Goldmine in the early 1900s, about my grandmother in Rampart. And my parents are James Johnson and Clara Anderson. And I was born here in Fairbanks. I'm very excited for the upcoming session. I'm a sophomore. This is my second term, so I am learning a lot. And I love these opportunities where we could hear from you and learn from you about just getting, you know, the beat on the community and where we could problem solve together as we represent Fairbanks in the 30, the second half of the 34th legislature.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name's Mindy O'Neill. I am the mayor of the city of Fairbanks. For the past six and a half years, I've been on the Borough Assembly. And in my professional job, I worked for the Cold Climate Housing Research Center, where I worked with communities across the state on building sustainable and researching sustainable and innovative housing for Arctic and extreme environments. I'm so happy to be here tonight. I'm not sure if it's ever been had where local and state governments are having a meeting together. So I think it's really, really great that this is happening. And I appreciate the invitation from Senator Kawasaki and Representative DiBert to participate in the forum this evening. I'm looking forward to the discussion. And if anybody would like to follow up with me afterwards, we do have some handouts over here, including my business card. So thanks for having me. I look forward to the discussion today.
Thanks, Mayor O'Neill. And thank you all so much for coming and raving the snow and being here. Really, really appreciate it. I see faces from districts all around the borough and the city, and it's really great to have everybody. My name's Ashley Carrick. I represent West Fairbanks, which is best Fairbanks. I'm joking. Everybody, I had to put that joke in because Will Stapp is not here. But my district includes Chena Pal, Chena Ridge, University of Alaska Fairbanks campus, University Hills, University West Airport, and Lakeview, wrapped all the way around on the Tamna River there. This is also my sophomore term in the State House. But this upcoming session, because I do have prior experience working in the legislature, is my 10th session that I'll be walking into in January. So I've gotten a chance to work in the legislature prior to serving in the legislature. I also have been the executive director of a nonprofit here in Fairbanks, have worked on a whole variety of different public health and education-related issues. And then, can you not hear me?
You can't hear me very well. I'm smart.
It's on. Maybe I'll talk closer to the mic.
Yeah.
What is first, what is the first one?
Is that any better?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good. Okay. I have a really quiet voice, too, so I'm sorry. And this coming session, we're in the second session of the legislature, so the committee assignments from last year remain the same for all of us this year. I currently chair the State Affairs Committee, co-chair the House Transfication Committee, and I sit on the Labor and Commerce Committee and Tribal Affairs Committee as well. So a pretty wide breadth of things that I get to work on. And just really happy to represent everybody that's here, and thank you for coming.
Yeah, we should have that microphone. Let's hope we can figure that dimension. Hi, I'm Mike Crox. I represent District 33 in the State House, and that is the North Pole, the eastern part, I suppose, of the Badger Road area and out to Moose Creek. And this will be my sixth or seventh year in the legislature. I started in 2019. And prior to that, I served on the Borough Assembly about 25 years ago. And my private career has mostly been working on the TransAlaska pipeline. My time in the legislature, most of it is spent on, served on the education, well, I did serve on the Education Committee, not this year, but I have served on the Education Committee and the Health and Social Services Committee. So most of my time has been devoted to those issues and then other duties as assigned, I guess I would say.
Thank you, Mike. My name's Greire Hopkins. I'm the Fairbanks North Star Borough Mayor. I get the privilege of saying every single neighborhood in our community is the best one. So it's wonderful. I've been the Fairbanks Borough Mayor for just over a year now. And we've been working hard to improve education funding here locally, find local tax incentives that we're working on now to increase housing development, finding ways to do the small things that we can at the borough here to make life in Fairbanks better, to not be an obstacle, but be a partner in growth, whether that's working with the state legislators, working with our federal delegation, our military bases, or with local entities and people and businesses right here, and undermining our own internal processes, too. We've been undertaking a lot of different efforts on a lot of different topics. And I was coming here trying to think of what we've been working on specifically. The housing incentive for multifamily housing is something that we want to re-engage and re-up that we did have for a year, that the assembly in the previous administration passed, and it's something we're excited about now. We're looking at getting a handle on short-term rental rates and occupancies here in the borough, as well as increasing our economic output so we can grow our community, looking at ways of improving quality of life, education, and our economy here. So thank you, Senator Kawasaki, for the invitation. My staff is also in the back, the guy in the tie back there, Tom Hewitt, is my staff. And my Public Information Officer just walked in as well. The Borough Public Information Officer, she's not mine, she's the borough's. So my staff here as well, and looking forward to the questions. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, great. Well, what we said we were going to do is we're going to first just have a couple slides, just sort of, so folks know, sort of general knowledge, information. We will then take a handful of cards that have already been submitted, answer those questions, sorry, ask the questions so everybody can hear the, and then we'll just pass it off to folks that want to, want to respond to it. And then we'll take questions from the audience. And you can either write them down, we've got cards that are going around, or when it comes, you could just raise your hand, and we'll try and call on folks. But I just wanted to first just show one of the, one of the crucial slides, I think it's important for this, for folks here to know, is where the money comes from. Forty percent of our state budget comes from the federal government. This is every year, we anticipate receiving funding for everything from Medicaid to construction projects to public safety. Every little part of that touches that 40% of revenue on the federal side. So of course, if there's a cut in federal revenue coming in, we either try to find funding within the state, or it's a program that gets cut. And that's been sort of the reality of where we've been at, as a state, the last handful of years, the last five or six years now. Thirty-seven percent comes from the permanent fund earnings. This is permanent fund, permanent fund investments that get spun off to the investment earnings account. That earnings account is divided over two major things. The government, general government services, so government, everything from roads, rails, and runways to police and public safety, fire, education. And then the other is the permanent fund dividend. And I know there might be some questions about that later on today. The other four or five items on the, on the other side represent much, much smaller amounts of funding that we reserve and receive every year. Oil and gas, for instance, is the next highest. It's right at 14%. Probably a decade ago, we've been more familiar with having that at 80% or 75% of our annual budget. It no longer is that large portion because of changes to the oil tax system about a dozen years ago. Price and production impact that. So if we've got a lower-priced oil, it means that our treasury goes down. If we have less production, it means our treasury goes down. Everything else is fees, everything from DMV fees and things like that to tourism taxes, fisheries, and timber and mining, and also a small, small sliver of the overall pie. Next slide. This is just sort of where our budget's at right now. A lot of people have asked, well, why don't, why don't we cut the budget? Or why haven't you cut the budget? The simple thing is that over the last 10 years, over the last decade, Democratic and Republican administrations, Democratic and Republican Houses and Senates, we have cut the budget significantly. Just showing agency operations on the left, that is your typical public safety, your troopers, road maintenance, things like that. Over $1.1 million has been cut in total agency operations. That's inflation, in inflation-adjusted dollars, or $39 million in just, in total dollars, real dollars. And then, as you can see, just going from the left of the graph to the right of the graph, how much that's really impacted the bottom line. Our capital budgets have shrunk over the last decade also, and that's sort of reflected in the fact that we have very few new road projects. We used to pave a lot of roads in town in your, in small neighborhoods and things like that. A lot of the projects that you see, like whether it was GARS or whether it's the upgrades to the Stees Highway bridges, those are all federal funding that comes in from time to time. And those are projects that have been on the books for a decade before they actually get done. I think that's all I wanted to say about that. But we can always go back to any slide anybody wants to see. Next slide. Oh, so one of the major things that the Senate wanted to do, and I know some of the House members might agree with us, is that we wanted to make sure that education had a firmer footing in the following years. We did what was called an increase to the base student allocation. The base student allocation is the per-pupil formula that each kid in each particular district has assigned to them from the state. And then, of course, local governments also come up with the balance of that. So your local mayor might want to have a conversation about, about that. The state had for 10 years flat-funded education. That means no increases to the base student allocation. So we've sort of seen an erosion of the overall school system. That small amount of money that we put in this last year, it's equivalent to $200 per kid, per student, per base student allocation, per person, I'm sorry, per child in every district, doesn't go to meet the needs. And if there's any school board members, maybe you'll speak about that. But it does give us a little bit more stability. I think it gives the school district a little bit more stability as they move forward. The other thing to think about is that we don't have as many kids in school as we did 10 years ago. And it's, it's just where we're at. We're not having as many children. There aren't as many, there aren't as many children in the school district. And since 2000, oh, yeah, and since COVID hit, more and more students have found their way to things like best, the local homeschool system, or have gone to private school, private academies, things like that. It is something that just is happening. But for sure, we have about 1,000 less kids than we did 10 years ago, and that's school-aged So, and that's just to show, this is the Fairbanks homeschool program that's administered through the district. These are where the numbers were at, very, very steady at 300 or so. And then they, and then they bumped up. Okay, that's it. That's it. Oh, that's the end of the slides. Hopefully, I answered some questions that you may have had about the budget, but we'll go ahead and now ask, answer a couple of questions that we have on cards. And I'll, and I'll speak them out loud, just because there might be people who are online who wanted to listen. And so we'll first, whoever wants to answer the first question can just answer the first question. Try and mix them up a little, too. How about, we don't have any Finance Committee members, but with oil prices remaining volatile, how do you see the effect, this affecting budget discussions in the upcoming session? Anybody want to start? Well, you want to start? All right.
The volatility in oil prices are definitely a challenge for the legislature to deal.
They make in the state legislature do impact our services and our community here in many different ways.
Yeah, I'll just add just one thing. We talked about revenue sharing. Revenue sharing was what the, when we had times of high oil prices and oil, we tried to share with the communities. The communities used it in different ways. I could say as a member, former member of the City Council, we used it to keep property taxes lower. I'm sure the borough would love to have what they used to get from the state in revenue sharing. The state this last year gave the city $80,000. Ten, or 20 years ago, it was $8 million. So if you think about the amount of money that is now being shouldered by local government rather than the state, it is, it is kind of crazy. And it's not the way we want to go, but it's the way we, as a legislature, have been able to balance the budget. Anybody else want to say anything about that? Okay, well, I gotta, I think we can. Oh.
Oh, I was just looking to my right. I guess I would just add that before I joined the legislature, we did have a fiscal working group that was bipartisan, where Republicans, Democrats, independents got into a room and came up with a plan. And I think that it would be great to try to do that again, because we're just, I mean, things aren't getting better. So if we could revisit that and try to follow some of the, the items that they created in that fiscal working group to guide us.
Could you explain things aren't getting better, or your meaning by that?
Oh, it's just like if we're following the oil, the price of oil, and we're, our budget is up and down month into month, yeah. It makes it very challenging.
Bernard.
So I'll ask the next question in line is, what do you think about the state of education funding? And I guess I'll pass it off to our former teacher expert.
What do I, well, I, being an educator for 22 and a half years, it is definitely where my heart is with the youth of this, this state. And I want, you know, I was a product of this school district. I went to Nordale, I went to Ryan, we moved, I graduated from West Valley. And during my tenure, I was able to learn the violin, I was able to join choir, I was able to take, learn a language in Spanish in West Valley, and for all four years. Like, you know, all of these things, and these are, and also we had art teachers in elementary school and middle school. And we had great teachers. I had teachers that taught my brother, you know, they knew the families. We had teachers that were here for a long time, and they knew who we were. And they worked with parents. And that is the kind of system that I want to have our youth who are here in Fairbanks to have, those same experiences where you can go, right now, you know, we are having, just talking with a few folks, right now, we're having a very difficult time with special education, where there are teachers who have caseloads of 40 kids, which is very difficult when you have these high needs and you're trying to help, and that, you end up doing more paperwork than working with kids. And so that is what I aim for, is telling these stories at the legislature. We need to have, bring back a first-class education system to our state, attracting teachers. We used to have, you know, when I first went into teaching, I was actually told not to get a degree in elementary education because there were no jobs. There were no jobs in Fairbanks, and there were no jobs in rural Alaska. They said, go look for another degree. But I didn't, I persevered. It took me many years to get hired. But that's, we had folks knocking on our doors to come teach in Alaska. And I want to somehow figure a way to have, bring that back to this state. It's for our most precious resource, our children.
Just keep pulling.
Testing, testing, testing.
It's like all the...
Who uses cords anywhere?
Budget cuts, we can't afford a cordless. Just kidding. I just wanted to add to what Representative DiBert said. You know, this, this last, this last session, the legislature on a very bipartisan basis passed an increase to the base student allocation. I think a lot of folks are pretty well aware of that vote and the subsequent votes to ensure that that stays in law, and the many years it took to get that, that passage across the finish line. And what it ultimately represented was not adjusting for inflation, even so with that increase, not adjusting for inflation to the current need, and not getting us back to the levels of funding that Representative DiBert is talking about, where we used to attract so many qualified teachers that we had to turn people away and had class sizes that were most, in most cases, half the size of what we see now. I don't know how many people here have had a chance to experience Lathrop High School on a busy day, but it is really, really hard to walk into a classroom at Lathrop High School. And I don't say hard to walk into because it's hard to see the students or not really fun to be in the school. It's hard to walk in because there's not physical space in the classroom to walk in the door. When you have 40 high school students in a classroom that was built for 25, you can't fit the students into the classroom. And then we're asking our teachers to teach them to these proficiency levels that, you know, you're just working on classroom management at that point. And it's really difficult for our school infrastructure and for educators. I also just want to point out, this question had initially said, what do we think about the state of education funding? And I also just wanted to point out that just yesterday, there was a Chamber of Commerce Lunch that was the state of UAF with Chancellor Spraga. It was a really, really great event. Chancellor Spraga had a chart which showed that in the last few years, as state funding has decreased for the University of Alaska, we've been able to essentially backfill some of that gap in funding with federal fund dollars. So we've kind of mitigated some of the huge losses in state funding for continuing education with federal dollars. And right now, those federal grants and programs are significantly under financial threat. So I'm really also concerned having UAF in my district and being a strong advocate for the UA system about what that looks like for all of our students to stay in Alaska. We know that the greatest provider of trades education and technical and vocational education in our state is the University of Alaska system by far. And it's also such a huge mechanism to get young people to stay in... And I think that's probably a story many, many people in this room could share. So those are kind of two other points I would add.
So, there's a local. So here's a little bit of a local question so we can engage some of the mayors, but these are coming from two different questions. First one is, when will the city of Fairbanks and the state of Alaska grow up? Institute a sales tax and bring back the income tax. Along with that, Anchorage has just tried to impose a 3% sales tax. Are there any motivations at the city or borough level to impose a sales tax? And I'll just answer the sort of the high level portion and then pass off to the mayors if they'd like to answer, but even the state has talked about a sales tax and instituting a statewide sales tax at 3%. The member from the Matt Sue who's now running for lieutenant governor and just resigned, Senator Schauer actually had proposed it and brought it forward to a committee to look at. The problem with instituting a statewide sales tax to meet the needs of the state's budget is that it takes away from the borough and the cities. It's the one way that some of their boroughs and cities across the state have found to fund local government. So, oh, that's all I'll say about that, but I will pass it off to Mayor Mindy.
Yeah, thank you. So in a way where we started off this conversation as far as, as the budget and this question are connected, right? The reason why we are feeling what we're feeling is because we are not getting our fair share from oil revenues. And we're, we're paying the price for that. Don't forget that. That's our resource and our prices to live here are going up because resources are being taken away from our state without getting, without getting our, our fair share of that. So now we have to come, you know, we have to come to the table and talk about how we are going to provide services for the needs of our community. We have, we're in the middle of budget discussions right now at the city. And on Monday, we were having a conversation about adding another community paramedic that is greatly needed to help our EMS, our emergency services. And Councilman Marnie took the floor and said, you know, what we really need is revenue. Ding 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 ding. What we really need is revenue. And it doesn't mean that we're growing government. What it means is our government isn't serving the people at a level that, that's needed. So what does revenue mean? Well, sure, we could do a sales tax. That's going to take a ballot measure, that's going to go to a ballot. We're going to have to not be scared of the word tax. And if we are, we're going to have to be aware that there will be other words replacing the word tax because it's going to be coming. It has to. We can't continue to operate at the level of service that we're providing without another source of revenue. And I don't know about you, but I do, it can come from my property taxes. They're too high already. I can't afford that. So if we are talking about a sales tax, then, you know, the things that I would advocate to exclude from that, food, feminine hygiene products, diapers, baby food, there's a lot of medicine, there's a lot of logistics to figure out there, but we're not breaking any ground. This isn't a novel idea. But we do have to work our way into a conversation of more revenue and what that looks like. So taxes may be the thing that we default to first, but we're also having conversations about a lottery. You may have seen that in the paper recently. There's some, you know, social considerations that we should take into, take into mind when we're talking about a lottery and we're talking about the service of government. There's other types of fees, regulatory fees that, that could go in. But if, if we really want to see our community grow, if we want to encourage new people to come to our town, to open businesses here, to continue to go to schools here, we have to ourselves invest. And I'll say, I'll say it where I began, we have to advocate for our, our fair share of our resources. I think Mayor Hopkins has something to add.
Thank you. It's a, it's a good question, but I'll start off by saying, no, the borough was not currently looking at a sales tax. I'll follow that up by saying, a lot of people have approached me with wanting a sales tax and it is from across the political, political spectrum. It is from across the economic spectrum. When I was out campaigning and knocking on doors, little old lady said, very conservative, and the rest of the answers, can we have a sales tax? Contractors and developers, can we have a sales tax? One of the biggest marijuana cultivators in the community, can we have a sales tax? And so, you know, it is something that people are bringing up. How do we invest in our community? And how do we distribute the, the revenue sources, diversify them in our community? So it's not so dependent on one aspect and property taxes is that one aspect these days. Where do we start at trying to get more revenue in the borough is growing our community and getting more, stronger economy, getting things growing, getting things built so we can see that we are a growing community and more people want to move here so that we can invest in that community. If there ever was to be a sales tax, it is not able to be done unilaterally by a local government. It has to be done by a vote of the people. So the, either a ballot measure collected, I believe, maybe people would be able to do that or to get it onto the ballot or the assembly would be able to put it on a ballot and, you know, describe what those implications would be.
The council can too.
The council could as well for the city. That would be within the city boundaries, but the borough could do it if they wanted to follow suit or the assembly wanted to do that. But it would have to go to a vote of the people and we're not currently looking at that at the borough, so thank you.
Maybe take a little different point of view here. I think we need to get away from talking about what is fair. Fair is debatable. If you, one way to look at it is what do we put in to get the resources out of the ground? Nothing. So is it fair to get anything? So that's not, that's not the right approach to it. We need to be looking at, how do we maximize the value that we have? We're selling the oil, we want to sell it effectively at the highest price we can get. And then we need to attract people to invest to develop that resource. And there were several strategies, it was mentioned earlier, the tax policy that was implemented was during the Panland administration. Essentially what, what was decided was that we would take up the upfront risk, give the oil companies tax subsidies for them to do the exploration, et cetera. And, you know, that's been 15 years ago, I think, quite a few years ago, but it is kind of work. The reason that Santos and Conoco are bringing these new fields online, which, by the way, Santos is predicting that they will bring it online three months earlier and they should ramp up another 80,000 barrels a day of, of oil. And then Conoco's Willow project that's going to bring in about another 150, every day, 1,000 barrels of oil, which is really going to help. This isn't going to be immediate, but my point is, is that the tax policy did incentivize that exploration which led to this production. It has also put the state in a cash flow problem that we're experiencing right now, which will improve in several years. But rather than looking at it fair is how can we make mutually beneficial deals so that we can get investors up here to develop the resources at some price that is most beneficial to us? It's a compromise factor. And other things that we should look at in lieu of taxes, federal impact aid, we have, according to the school district, we are leaving a lot of federal impact aid on the table. That's up to us. The gentleman that I talked to at the school district estimated about 10 million. I heard from the AML that it might be as much as 30 or 40 million. So that's something that we can do to straighten that out. The other thing is, look at our regulatory structure. It takes about six, six years on a good day, eight, 10 years to, from the time that a company buys a lease and is able to develop, start drilling the hole in the ground. Whereas other jurisdictions in Texas, it might take a matter of months, some states might take a couple of years. We have a federal issue up here, lawsuits, et cetera, but the state's adding to that. And if we look at ways where we can reduce the permitting time, just processing the permits, we reduce the risk for the investors, for the oil companies. And we should be looking at that because that's a win-win solution. And then for school funding and all funding, we should be putting pressure on us, the legislature, to get the budget done and decided in 90 days. There's an initiative that was passed, we're supposed to get the whole session done in 90 days. We don't pay attention to that. And you folks need to put more pressure on us to do that. It can be done. And if it's done in 90 days, then we, we should stay down there because there's enough left to do, but that gives the governor time to exercise his vetoes and then we either uphold him or override him, but it's done at the end of May. And we don't have to be worrying about it for the next six months. So these are some things that we should look at and not just think about getting more money from taxes or whatever.
What kind of pressure?
Send us emails, starting.
Email is efficient, you know?
Pardon? Well, email is a start. Oh, by the way, when you do send an email, do put your full name, address and bonus of phone number so that we can call you back. You're, you're much more likely to get a response if you put a, your address down there and your phone number. Because we get tons of emails, but we do pay, or at least I pay attention, especially to those that I know are coming from District 33 and Fair, Fairbanks is my second part. Anchorage. I don't know where it says, it sounds something.
It just seems like a lot of talk, a lot of talk should be shared, we should. When he's really wants plans to do it.
Well, yeah, but it takes, the legislature is driven by pressure.
So then you take this. So step up and they can't. So then let's, I'm asking you a question.
Yeah, go ahead. No, she had to follow up.
When you raise a point up, it's nice to know.
Yeah. Nope, emails are good.
And you can use those emails as clout?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, I'll just add that emails, phone calls, making, coming, demanding that your legislators come to public events that are hosted by legislators. I think it's, you know, it's important. We're, we're not in an election year. This isn't an election year. We're elected. You, we don't need your vote today. We need you to tell us how you would like us to vote and what you would like us to do when we're down in June. I wanted to say one thing, if you're going to write a message that you'd like read, please write legibly. I can't read all of these, but if you do have one, and if, at some point, we'll just go by hands if somebody wants to just ask questions, but I'll try and ask these questions because these were already on, on the queue. There's three questions, sort of semi-related. One is, can we increase state revenue to mining? With the current administration's intense focus on the extraction of natural resources from the state, how can we both stem unwanted development of mining slash drilling? Or when we can't do so, how can we ma, ensure maximum benefit through taxation? And then the last is that both the borough and state would benefit from diversified revenue streams. Can we look at mineral, the mineral extraction industry? Alaska and the borough are seeing increased mining related activity and traffic on our roads and bridges. It's time to find a way for the mineral extraction industry to contribute to the infrastructure they're using. Someone want to take that? I know there's several members on the resources committees here, but I can take it. I'll start, I'll start that say the, the mining taxes from the state of Alaska haven't been redone since 1959. That was the year of statehood. The, it's really interesting if you look at the way the taxes were set, they had a progressive tax system. So they said after a certain amount, you pay X percent. After a higher amount, you pay X percent plus. And it goes all the way up to 8%. And the, the minimum profit, I'm sorry, the maximum profit height was $100,000 at 8%. There's like, I don't know what companies that don't make $100,000 in a year in profit. And so really what's happening is there's four or 500 miners that are still filing the reports, paying the reports, but ultimately the money that we get from them is tiny. And these big corporations that have big corporate tax structures are not paying and related version, I guess. And that's all I'll say about that. I'll say it's very difficult to try to tax one industry. It was tried under Governor Walker. It has to go through committees, it's got to go through the committee process and it's, it's delicate, but maybe Representative?
I'll just add on to that, I do sit on the, I co-chair House Resources with my colleague, Representative Robin Burke, who represents Utqiapik and District, House District 40, which is up north. And I guess I would say for my district downtown Fairbanks, it is exciting time for many of my constituents because it is expensive to live here. And when I talk to folks, people have jobs here, they have stable jobs, they're working out at Pogo, they're working out at Kinross, Mancho now, and there, it's putting food on the table. And when we talk about new rev, revenue, and as I was door knocking last year, I found myself in these like conversations, really good, deep conversations with people at the door. And I was like, oh, okay, you know, like, do you rent here? Do you live here? Oh, no, I live outside. I'm from, you know, I live in Alabama, I drive truck for Mancho and it's great to be up here. And I was like, I'm like, ah, I just wasted a half hour, okay. But that is one area that we can immediately fix is like capturing, when our community needs help with funding education, funding our roads and our, helping our seniors and our childcare, we need to find a way to capture these workers who are coming through our community and not helping us. You know, they're, they're benefiting and I think that is where a place that I would like to start when we talk about revenue, mining. And I just, you know, I'm very grateful that many of my community members can have stable jobs right now and we need it, they need to pay for food and groceries and all that. So our energy prices, so I will pass it off to my colleague.
And I, I've talked with a lot of folks in this room about this issue, so I'll try to be really brief, but in short, I think above and beyond anything else I'm working on right now, this is the number one issue that I've been contacted about and that I'm working on right now, is potential mining reform and mining tax reform. Because Alaskans are not getting their fair share. And I just want to go back to what the constitution says, that we will maximize resource development, but we will do so for the greatest benefit of Alaskans. It doesn't say for Alaska, it doesn't say for our economic potential for out of state, often foreign, international mining companies. It says for Alaskans, as in the people of Alaska. And what's become very clear to me and to so many of us who live adjacent to current or proposed developments, is that that maximization of potential is not happening for our communities. And for example, the mining tax rate right now for the state of Alaska is 0.6%. As Senator Kawasaki mentioned, that has remained the same since 1959. So this number and this percentage has not changed since around the time of statehood. And yet, mining in Alaska has changed since the time of statehood. Gone are the days when people were just backyard class or miners. Gone are even the days of medium sized scale dredging operations. Those things still exist in Alaska, but right now, we are seeing a large influx of large developments. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, but what is challenging is looking at, say, the profits from Kinross just this last year at $1.5 billion. And the tax burden of them on the state was $15 million. So it's, it's a mere pennies comparison of a So it's a mere pennies comparison of the profits. And I, as I mentioned at the beginning, I co-chair the transportation committee in the House. The proposed projects around the state of Alaska for road and highway maintenance and marine highway operations as well, to support directly mining operations, that's state dollars, and that number far exceeds $15 million. So at this time, it's clear to me that Alaska is actually paying for what is most typically out-of-state and out-of-country mining companies to take our resources. The benefit we receive in revenue does not begin to cover the costs that we pay. I'm going to keep working on this issue. There's so much more to talk about regarding permitting as well. I really respect Representative Proch's willingness to have conversations with this whole group on this issue, but I will push back. The International Responsible Mining Association, which is an industry and public-led and science-led effort, so it's not just hippie greenies, okay? It's people in the mining industry. That international association puts Alaska at one of the two bottom states for permitting burden and for regulatory burden on the industry. So that's not to say the solution is just to add a bunch of regulations, really, really. But what is really clear is we are absolutely not the hardest place to mine in this country. And I just think there's a lot of room to explore a lot of these related issues. And thank you for the questions.
Well, let's engage the mayors in one. There's a question from the back, and I think online as well, wanted to hear about funding to keep the warming shelters open over the winter, as well as plans for the community service patrol. Those are typically local issues. I'll say that the state has from time to time when we've had money, been able to help support it, but recently, we have not been able to help out.
Yeah, so the warming shelter that has opened up is not a city-run warming shelter. The difference between the borough and the city is that the city is able to contribute to social services such as warming shelters and police and fire, things like that. In the budget that I proposed, I included funding $30,000 to support the warming shelter. It has not been funded yet by the council, but we still have a few weeks. What I will tell you is, last Friday, I helped out at the warming shelter. They were short-staffed, and I went there at 10 o'clock and I left at 1:00 a.m. And by 10 o'clock, by the time I walked through the door, there were 40 people in line. By 1:00, there were over 80 people in that small space that is probably about the size of this, maybe even a little smaller. It's not even gotten cold yet. And we have that sort of need in our community. That indicates that there are other ills happening. That indicates that we're not meeting the needs of our community for mental health issues, substance abuse issues, and housing issues, which we all know. These are issues that the city can fund, that we can take up and that we can manage if we want to invest in it, if we decide that that's a priority that we want to fund. So that's, that's, that's up to, that's our next decision in the budget. The community service patrol has, in the last couple of years, has improved its services. And that has happened in the way of a community paramedic. So now we have somebody who is responding to senior calls, somebody who is going to someone's house to drive them to an appointment, maybe, where before, if maybe somebody fell at their house, they just couldn't get up or something, they'd have to call 911. We dispatch our fire, we dispatch our police. And now they're taken off the scene for critical incidents that may have happened at an intersection or something like that. We've also put together a Crisis Now team that has been able to address acute instances on the street and working with homelessness population and other types of populations that we see needing resources and social services. And what they're doing is meeting them where they are, asking them what they need, and connecting them to the resources that do exist in our community. We don't have enough mental health beds. We don't have enough places where folks can go to be sober if they're not sober. We don't have enough senior citizens that are able, senior citizen residences. And these are contributing to what we're seeing and why we're filled at 80 people in a warming shelter when it's still 20 degrees outside. So, you know, I know over here, we're going to say, what do we do about it? Well, I ran for mayor because I wanted to do something about it. So here I am. I'm advocating for it in my chambers. I'm advocating for it with my council. And what I would ask of you is that you also advocate for that. You also show that you're concerned about those who are living without a house, that those who struggle with mental illness, that those who struggle with substance abuse, and that we, as a community, really do care about that population, because I know we do. But we have to hear that back from the community as well.
We can just get the borough to give you one of the empty schools that we are starting with.
Greer might have something to say about that.
Well, that's an interesting vote. Stick with that. The mayor mentioned the Crisis Now program, which has really looked good from the perspective of the state legislature. They have set up a really good program. They're ahead of a lot of different communities, certainly throughout the nation. And that is paying dividends in helping people. But what's measurable now, unfortunately, the way we look at it, but it's a good thing, is they have, the Crisis Now program has saved the, between the police, the correction center, and the hospital, they have saved about $20 million. And the program isn't costing us nearly that much to run. So thinking outside the box is the way we've got to look at that. And that is one of them that is looking good, at least from my perspective, on the Health and Social Services Committee. And then I was just talking to a young lady that runs the door. It's a youth shelter, emergency shelter. And they could use a lot of volunteer help, and they could use donations, and we should be supporting regulations, organizations like that. That's, a lot of these social programs really are our responsibility on an individual level. And should be funded and should be run that way, rather than advocating that to the state. We'll get a lot better results. And then we will have money to spend on other things that are more for the state. And then I just wanted to point out, we talked about mining and the impact of that. The Fort Knox mine, yes, today, they are making excellent profits. But it took them nearly 20 years to, if you will, totally break even. They were covering their operating costs, paying off their initial investment. And it's only been for the last, or maybe 10 years, that they have cut a profit that they're returning to their shareholders. And the price of gold has gone up. They're benefiting to get that. The word that Rep. Carrick used in the Constitution is for the maximum benefit. That's what we should be thinking about. It isn't a matter of fairness, is we're trying to maximize our benefit, but you have to have somebody here that develops the resource. Again, going back to Fort Knox, they are, I believe, are they the biggest property taxpayer in the borough now?
Yes.
They, correct me if I'm wrong, about 30% of the demand for Golden Valley. And if their mill shuts down, Golden Valley turns to us. Amortize the capital costs of electricity. The price of electricity is, it's high, I get it, but it would be even higher if we didn't have those companies in there. And they're on mental health trust land, so they are also sending money back to the mental health trust. And there's several other mining properties in the world, in the borough, that are owned, essentially, by the mental health trust. And that brings money into, essentially, it offsets the cost of mental health treatment to the rest of the state. So it would be better, in my mind, to take advantage of those properties, get that money going, develop jobs, there would be all kinds of advantages, and it would maximize our benefit on that.
A couple of things. You know, I'll just touch on what Rep. Proch said about the mental health trust land. A lot of the land that they have is now in suburban neighborhoods that they look at as, how do they develop it? And the maximum benefit that they use can certainly be maximum benefit for the community as well as the mental health trust. So if they wanted to develop some of that land, do it as subdivision, do it as opportunities for new housing in new places that fit in with the neighborhood instead of just developing it as a mine would certainly something that I think would be beneficial, and the borough would really appreciate it. Because a number of those communities don't want that, a number of the neighborhoods don't want that land developed now as a mine, but could see it developed another way. On a couple of things, you said, throw out a, give a school to the city to help with health and social service issues. The borough is a second-class municipality, so we technically do not have health and social service powers. But that doesn't mean we can't partner with the city and partner with private entities to help find solutions. And one of the ways we're going to be doing that is trying to figure out what to do with Joy Community Center. The Borough Assembly closed it on a, I believe, 5-4, 6-3 vote, I think 5-4, to stop using it as a community center and say, Borough Mayor, go figure out what to do with it. So I'm partnering with Mindy O'Neill, the city mayor, to put out a survey later this month, early January, to ask the community, what do we want with it? It's going to have a list of items that you can say, yes, you can rank those three items that you want. It's probably like 25, 30 things. You can put in your own idea, if you have a business model for what to do with it, that will be an option for you to attach to it. Then I will partner with the city, because they have more powers as a home rule municipality. They can do more things. They can do health and social service, they can do childcare, that sort of thing. So if that is what it takes to put that facility to the best use for our community, we can do exactly that. So that's exactly what we're trying to move forward on, by listening to the community and putting our powers to the best use. The three mayors like to be like Ultron, and put ourselves together for the strongest, strongest robot. I also want to give kudos to Mayor O'Neill, something she didn't say in terms of the community service patrol. When she was on the Borough Assembly, she increased the, how much the borough gives to the city for that community service patrol van by $350,000. It was $20,000, and she increased it to $350,000, using vet tax dollars from tourism. Tourism continues to go up here in our community, and she didn't use property taxes. And now the system that that new community service patrol contractor is doing is much better than it used to be. Now it's wraparound services that that new contractor is providing. So instead of just picking people up and bringing them to the jail, for them to sober up and come on out, they're trying to get services to those people, whether it's rehabilitation, whether it's housing, whether it's jobs, whatever it needs, they are now doing a much better job at the city of trying to solve the problems long-term, instead of just for the night. Decided for the borough to partner with the city on that as well. Yeah, so thank you.
Put a little bit of a caution. On the mining, we're specific. Mayor Hockins is referring to Estridun, that he is correct, there have been people moving in, that is moving towards a residential subdivision, but there is a big chunk of land up there that's owned by mental health. And the problem right now is we don't know how much gold, if any, is down there. Until that's explored, we really can't decide what the highest best use of that land is for the mental health trust. If there isn't much gold, you betcha, turn that into a ski hill or a subdivision. But if you're going to make 10 times the amount by mining the gold, then you got to figure that out. And both of those have to go into the maximum benefit equation. And we need to start looking at that as a community of the whole area, because there's dozens of different prospects. And we don't want to wait until something is eminently happening. Then we have a big contentious argument. We want to look at that and look at it dispassionately.
Before we go to some raised hands that I've seen, I just want to say again, if you, I didn't read your questions because, one, I might not have been able to read it, or it might have been combined with one of the other ones. But the next question, and there's one about Denali, but we'll save that.
No. Good Denali.
The question is, what can be done to open up Denali to winter skiing and increase tourism, railroad, more revenues? Seemed like a Denali question, but if anybody wants to respond. Oh, my gosh, okay.
You put a mic in front of us, we'll take the question.
I love that question. Who asked that question? Oh, okay. I mean, I'm just fully supportive of tourism development in Alaska. I think it's another area of huge opportunity for development of our, development of our resources can include as well recreational economy resources in Alaska. And it's an area of underdevelopment compared to other western states. So I'm just, would use that as an opportunity to say, sure, I think it'd be great to see more businesses opening up in that vein. It would also be great to see, one of the great benefits of doing a Northern Rail extension might be additional tourism development in that region. There's also potential in the future for continuing or additional investment in tourism marketing dollars. We currently pay as a state somewhere between $5 and $10 million in the previous few years for seafood marketing. And that benefits people across Alaska who work in the fishing industry. But tourism, I've argued many times with my colleagues, benefits the entire state because from southeast to the interior to the north slope, there are tourism development opportunities in the entirety of our state. It's a renewable economy, a regenerative economy of bringing people up to Alaska. So I'm just a huge proponent of developments like that.
I just want to add one thing to the question. In Fairbanks, as far as Fairbanks to Anchorage rail service, you can't go to Anchorage on a Saturday during the winter. And it seems silly that there's no rail service, Fairbanks to Anchorage, or Fairbanks to Denali, and then back to Fairbanks. And it would increase Fairbanks tourism dollars if we did have such rail service and all those businesses would stay open and skiing would be available at Sugarboat or Hill over there behind the Ravens, the pro镇. Because you get so much in vet tax for their initial landing here at our airport and then pulling over there to ski. So that was, it wasn't a Denali project, it was just, and it would increase huge amounts, you know, tourism flights to Fairbanks, going skiing in Denali, and then returning up there along.
Yeah. Oh, also, others are up here nodding too. And I would just also add the long trail as a really great and significant investment for Alaska and for recreational economy, like what you're talking about. And one thing I would just note there is, the railroad is a private, is a state-owned corporation, but I, I've started trying to talk with them a little bit about resident rates for the railroad, because right now, the railroad will fully admit, rates are really high. If you want to just, my grandma grew up in Fairbanks, and she used to visit her friends in Anchorage by hopping on the train for 12 hours and going down to Anchorage that way. But if you do that same trip today for fun or to get to Anchorage, it's going to cost you upwards of $500. And that doesn't seem like a great way to incentivize train travel for residents in the state. So I do want to look into that a lot more. And I know that the railroad corporation is also interested in doing that. They've just also had to keep themselves solvent as a corporation too, and have had to weigh those considerations.
Okay, we've got a couple more questions. This one is about property taxes. Could the exemptions be raised on property taxes and the mill rates be raised? Could the exemptions be raised on property taxes and the mill rates be raised to make up the difference? Or something to that effect? You guys want to start locally?
Local. Thank you. Yeah, so there are several mandatory exemptions from the state. $150,000 senior mandatory property tax exemption, your house is worth $300,000, you are only taxed on $150,000 of that. There are mandatory exemptions for churches and hospitals and cemeteries and schools, educational facilities. All of those are mandatory state exemptions. There's ones for disabled veterans, widows of fallen public safety officers. All of these are mandatory exemptions, which we don't get any revenue back from for the lost property value that we're supposed to get as municipalities, the state is supposed to. They never have since it's been in place, 30 years old now. So it's an issue, but certainly not one that's going to get fixed tomorrow, most likely. You can raise the residential homeowner's exemption still, for your primary residence, could still be raised for us that own homes and our primary residence. In order to maintain services and maintain revenue, mill rate would have to go up and other people would have to pay more taxes. So as we raise the homeowner's exemption, the savings you get would have to more or less be passed off to, in the majority, the business community. And as Mayor O'Neill was talking about, the cost of living here being high, that is one way to see those go up if they need to pay more taxes, would have to cover those, that increased cost somehow, and that would be by the sale of goods. So that would be what that trade-off is when it comes to exemptions. Is that basically what the question was?
Yeah.
It's really important for us to look at exemptions. I agree with Mayor, the legislature years ago mandated exemptions, the bargain was, hands, our fingers crossed behind their back. We will reimburse you if we appropriate the money to do it, which they haven't had.
Sounds like day one.
It's 97. Yes, we should definitely look at that. But we should think carefully about giving somebody an exemption because somebody else ends up having to pay. I am a senior, so I get the senior exemption. Frankly, I don't think that's fair, because people, young families who are renting, don't get any exemption. It doesn't fall through to them, and that, they need it a lot more than I do. Thank you for giving me the benefit, but no, we need to stop thinking that way. And we think that there is paying our fair share. We should be really thinking careful about exemptions.
Thank you. I'm going to ask this question before we go off. Let's see, where is that question? Oh, there's a question here about, what can the state do to best address the rising costs of healthcare, proposals recently about healthcare. The costs to employees at UAF and UAA and districts across the state are crippling budgets. Is Alaska care for these groups an option?
I would love to address this. I've spent a lot of time in it. There is quite a few things that we can do. There are several bills in the legislature now, I have sponsored one, I call it Free the Natropaths. By state law, they are not allowed to practice to the level of their education and training. This is, it's a choice between the provider and the patient, not, it isn't our business to restrict them from practicing. So we need to pass that bill. There's another one, there's, state needs to join the nurse licensure compact that is restricting the supply of nurses that come into Alaska, which drives the price up higher. We've got another one coming in, same thing, we need to join the medical physicians licensure compact. There's several others for mental health providers, psychologists, et cetera, but we need to really take a hard look at whether all of these restrictions, these barriers to entry are doing us any good. I think they're not. So we need to look at those bills carefully. There's also a bill to enable, I guess, allow municipalities and school districts to join the state health insurance plan. And that, in the long run, will be good. In the short run, we don't know. It opens it up to adverse selection. But we need to look carefully at that bill. I think that that will help lower the cost of insurance for all, if you will, public employees. And that, that would reduce the cost for a whole bunch of other stuff. There are some things that we can do and should get through this legislature. Any of the licensure bills, in my opinion, should pass. Been difficult.
Yeah, I think some of these tools that he's talking about, it doesn't address the question directly, but it does have an indirect, indirect way to reduce the cost of healthcare overall, allowing licensed professionals to be able to practice up to their license. I have the bill in the Senate, it actually originated in this, in this, in this area by Representative David Gutberg, who was representative a decade ago, who introduced that for natropaths. There's a lot of other bills similar to that, there's one for pharmacists, there's one for PAs. It's coming, and I think that we'll see some action on it this year. There's a question, oh, actually, we'll go ahead, I know there were a couple questions, there was a hand that way. Yeah, Darlene.
Talking about the mining, I think about the legislatures should be the bill to attract the people that mine in the state of Alaska. And I don't know why, that, I don't know why there's no bills for that, because they are taking a lot of gold out of the motherland. Right now, I'm from Fort Yukon, they went into Bird's, Bird's Creek is about 45 minutes from where I'm from, and I guess, so they say, they didn't find oil there, I mean, oil. And, oh, I was talking about mining, sorry. They have a big mine, they have seven mines, hard rock mines in the state of Alaska. And also, they have 150 small mines, and that's a lot, lot of money right there. So maybe we should, maybe you guys should start thinking about making a bill to charge these people to come into our country and take our rocks and not walk out free.
Thank you, Darlene. There's a gentleman in blue, I can't read this.
Well, I'm sorry, sir, I can give you, it's just, I was just saying that my father had a nice cabin out at, basically, at, well, I'm sorry, at 49 Mile, on the Old Steeze, and there's a big, huge gold mine, it's a big mountain, and the point of that reason I was mentioning is like two over at once, and the point being is it was empty. It was three quarters empty, and then like the last bit of it, they were bringing into it, was three quarters empty as well. Point being is, is that if you bring to that kind of mine, how, was that the same much you were speaking of, sir?
I think it is, port not.
Okay, so 20 years, you can't make a profit getting that much gold? That's bullshit.
Well, I don't know. I'm just telling you what it is. If we want the income that comes from those resources, that's what we're up against. We can't force them to do it.
We're not getting the income.
Yeah. There might be a disagreement amongst this panel about how we address the issue. I mean, obviously, it looks like there's some folks that are interested in introducing legislation this year on mining taxes. I've introduced lots of bills on oil and gas taxes every year, and this will be a discussion every year, as long as we've got these massive $2 billion budget deficits coming into the, coming into this next year, another $2 billion. You know, it was called a $2 billion giveaway when oil taxes were changed in 2013. There was a reason why it was called that, and it's because it costs the state treasury roughly $2 billion. Every year since then, we've lost that amount of money in our savings account. We had a full savings account, not a dozen years ago, and we shrunk down to roughly $2.5 to $3 billion. It's just enough to get us by. So there is a disagreement over how we address that shortfall. I will say that, you know, even if a company says, we're going to develop here, we're going to drill, we're going to mine, we're going to take this, I still think that we should be getting the best value for each ounce, each drop of oil, and it's done in a market. If they don't want to do it, there will be somebody that will, so that's just fine. But again, not a debate, we're not going to debate here. We wanted to hear from the public about your concerns and questions, so, did, you want to finish, sir?
My last question, the thing is, at one time, it was very nice when our electrical was being paid for by this same gold company, and then all of a sudden, there was a law that we made and said, oh, you don't have to pay that much, and that's what occurred. Okay, so the point being is, why are we losing all the money from when our state is being emptied of gold? I mean, entire mountain of gold. How can you spend that?
We could argue all night on that, but happy, if you want to hang around, I'm happy to check with you about that.
Nope, yep, understand. How about right here in the center? Yes?
I raise a hand again, because I raised my hand, in this case, and I knew it, and it was too late.
Go ahead.
So my question actually ties into all of this and what some of Representative Prox was saying when speaking about Estradome and looking at not knowing whether, whether the mental health trust ran and the value of that until we know about the amount of gold. And that raises a question that comes to mind, also, when we speak about the maximum benefit. Why does it have to be long here? The value have to be not there? I think when you look at it just in a narrow, you don't know how much money can we make off of this, because we lose a lot of true value with those who are living in areas of, otherwise, it's the other time to get.
Yeah, point well taken, there's benefits other than monetary, but if we want the services that we say we want the state to provide, the state has to get some money from somewhere to provide those services. So there's, there's all kinds of trade-offs, just so that we recognize the trade-offs. That's my goal.
You just don't have a good toll.
All right, right here. Yeah.
So, these companies are making money off of the resources that they extract from Alaska, which means that there is a price tag on the natural resources being extracted from Alaska, which means they are literally taking money from our land, so, as Alaskans, so, shouldn't we get some of that money?
Slightly longer answer, the mining tax rate at 0.6% has not changed, again, since the time of statehood, and what that percentage has looked like over time has really changed. So 0.6% of mining tax revenue at the time of that institution was a much more significant burden on small-scale, one-to-20-person class or miners than it is on, say, Red Dog or Yussavelli or Kinross. And I'm not trying to throw any one company under the bus, I'm just saying that that tax burden changes depending on that size of the company, in terms of what impact it makes on their bottom line. And I just wanted to follow up on something said earlier, just that I agree, I've lived on Estradome my whole time in Fairbanks, and my quality of life is 100% better if I have access to my neighbors who live next door to me, just up the road, who I hope will still live there in five to 10 years. My quality of life is better improved by having access to trails on Estradome, which will be impacted by US antimony's development, whether they fully scale up their operations or not. Does anybody here live on Murphy Dome? Murphy Dome has an in-progress open pit mine. Murphy Dome is a residential community. Tetlin is also a residential community. And I just really, I know I'm speaking to largely people in agreement with me here tonight, but I would say this to anyone, we really do, if we're going to think about balance and we're going to think about, it doesn't have to be fairness, it can just be the revenue side of it, but as we think about those questions, we have to think about what the long-term future of Alaska will look like for future generations. We have to think about the quality of life as well when we think about maximum benefit. And the balance, again, is just not being struck at this time. And I think this room of folks is helping to illustrate that. But I just want you to know that around the state, you're not alone, and you feel in that way, if that's, you know, your perspective as well. I've also heard from folks in South Central, I've heard from folks in Southeast on really similar concerns, because even though many of us in this room want to maximize resource development in the long-term future, we want to make sure we're getting profits, we're not anti-mining people inherently, most of us, but we're not in favor of what's currently happening. And what's currently happening is not, honestly, it's not fair, but you can measure it by the revenue metric too, and it still is not, it's not great.
It's not working out.
It's not working out. I don't know who you want to.
You go ahead, just go.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, everyone for being here. Thank you, everyone. I moved in here in 1970, when I was just a young kid, seven years old, to Delta Junction, and things, the economy, I was just a kid, but I remember when the pipeline came. And I don't know all the things about it, all the different, you know, flexities, but when that pipeline came, our economy, life went up, way up. So I'm asking about the gas line, you know, can we get a gas line when? And then, you know, that's that, and then the second one is, can we cap these utilities? I just heard on the news that the CEO gets $450,000, and we're paying for something just to survive and stay warm.
So thanks for the question. I guess since I have the mic, the first part of the question about a gas line, you know, there might be varying perspectives up here, but I know every single one of us is really interested in, including on, are we going to get a gas line this time? You've been in Alaska long enough, many people in this room have to know that, we've kind of been through this hope and pray cycle, and then it goes off, and done that several times over. And I think a lot of us up here really do, including me, really hope that this time it really pans out, because it would be a huge economic boom. But I'm skeptical, I think a lot of folks are skeptical.
Why are we getting it?
It's really expensive. Long story short, she asked, why are we not getting it? It's really expensive, long story short. So whoever's going to develop that project has got to have a tremendous volume of assets. There's also, we want to talk about where permitting is really a challenge, the amount of different types of land that that gas line crosses is enormous, different types of land ownership and management. It's a huge logistic project, and that's what's turned away so many folks in the past. I'll let others answer.
So if we get a natural gas pipeline, this community should be up in arms if it does not have a spur line to Fairbanks. Because I tell you that the rest of the state thinks this is an awesome idea, and they're very happy to let it go right past the Fairbanks North Star Borough, some of the highest costs of energy in the state, in the second-largest community in the state. So this community, if we want the natural gas pipeline, it should not be without the spur line, period. That's my view.
We can talk, I can talk about it, just since, I don't want to throw Travis Millian under the bus, but he was here earlier. So the, so the utilities go through rate regulation through the Regulatory Commission of Alaska. Those commissioners are appointed by the governor and confirmed by the legislature. And the legislature has confirmed all of them, I don't know if there's been any controversial ones, but they have to go through a regulatory process to ask if their rates can go higher, and they have to justify them, and they have to be justified reasonable rates. And so I know there's a lot of people that might be upset about the cost of electricity, but they have to be able to justify it to the but they have to be able to justify it to the rate regulators that are already in place.
Have you noticed there's a lot of darkness on rules, like school's not in session, there's no lights around.
Let's, yeah, let's, do you want to?
Sure, just one final, and then I'll pick someone. I just wanted to say that the natural gas pipeline will be a priority in the legislature. It'll be in the Resources Committee, and it will not get through, I co-chair the Resources Committee, and it will not leave the House Resources Committee without a spur line. I just wanted to add that.
And it didn't leave State Affairs without a spur line either.
Thank you very much, my colleague.
Not letting it go through.
Go ahead.
You have a question for you, Senator Krasnicki. You talk about loss of revenue from the oil. You guys introduced a bill that's legislation for taxes in the state of Alaska.
So there, to answer your question, there actually have been a number of bills that are introduced now, currently either working, they're working through the Senate Resources Committee. Pretty sure the House has similar bills. These are some bills that we've done in years past. These are some bills that I've advocated for a decade since the oil tax changes were done. Since the per barrel credit, that's one that seems to be moving right now. Per barrel credit was a credit that we basically say for every dollar above a certain amount, they get to deduct. And these deductions can go on forever, and they're ending up costing the state treasury roughly $200 million a year. That is one of the things that we'd like to change, so they don't get as much of that, $200 million. That would, again, save the state roughly $200 million. They're not doing extra work to get those credits. They're doing no extra work to do the credits. They're doing exactly what they had been doing before. So eliminating those credits is something of a priority for me anyways. Do you want to say? The bill's already introduced. Yeah.
How about fixing the Hillcorp Blue Hole? How about the actual Hillcorp Blue Hole? They were getting away with murder.
Some people understand, so some people understand when BP was here, BP had assets on the North Slope. They sold those assets. Those assets were sold to a company called Hillcorp. Hillcorp is a privately owned company, single person owns the company. It's a multi-billionaire, he's out of Texas. Because of the way we tax corporations in the state of Alaska, he's not taxed like BP was. He's an individual.
I submitted an article that says, the problem is, the state needs an income tax, and that problem goes away. You can tax an corporation where the LSC is needed an income tax. You solve that problem. That's the situation, that's the problem.
Thank you for your, thanks for your suggestions, Rich. Are there, let's get some more questions on, and if we can change them up. Go ahead, Gary. Oh, sorry, Gary. Oh, yes. They want the first slide out. Joe? Nice try.
We had an income tax, and we had a stable, school taxes, $10. Income tax, that school tax were easy to pay. They were painless. My question is, if we were to implement, re-implement the income tax, which I thought should never have gone away, and school tax, which would be adjusted for inflation today, where on this chart would the income from those fall? Do you have any idea?
I'd have to think about that. I don't, I don't know. And it really depends on what the income tax rate is. I mean, there's a bunch of different caveats.
Back then, I think it was just a percentage of your federal tax. It was, I don't remember what it was, 10% or whatever. If you had implemented something similar, what would the revenue be and where would it fall on that chart? I think that that would be something worth looking into.
Yes, I'll try to answer the question, then we could follow up after the meeting today, is that I, it's hard to say what it would look like on that chart. I will say that it would probably be a significant portion, but not so major as to replace federal income or all of the oil and gas income. And, but it was, the one thing it does do though, and something that's really significant, is it stabilizes the budget. And so you have these ebbs and flows of federal money coming in every year. We're not sure if money's coming in. Every year, we're looking at oil and gas prices. Like every day, these legislators look at oil and gas prices because we're trying to figure out what the budget's going to look like, and the governor does too. So it's a, it's an important, it's an important thing to know that we have revenue coming in from lots of different sources so that it sort of flattens out our hectic up and downs. Bobby?
So here, can you just finish with, and also, I wanted to give kudos to Mindy and our borough mayor.
Prior.
I recently visited him, though, and I know I'm at the national level. Done some visiting up on the hill and worked around getting bills introduced that have absentee roles. And so I believe in the system. I believe in actually doing advocacy and educating lawmakers or legislators. And here's what I got for you. On the 15th, the governor is going to be putting his budget out. We don't have to necessarily look at a bill this time. What we can do is to insert into the budget. And I'm asking you, if you'd be able to insert this into the budget to help Mindy and Prior with that project they're going to do, and try to keep it warm like Warming Shelter. If you can insert that into the 15th September, it can happen. In other words, we have very little window space there, but I truly believe if we insert that into the budgets, we can make a difference in the province of Alaska.
Just call up the governor.
So I'll just say that, thanks Bobby for the question. So right now, as we're doing this with the public today, we've also been meeting with various groups, and we met with the mayor, and we met with city council last Monday. We're meeting with the borough Thursday, tomorrow. We're meeting with the borough tomorrow. We're meeting with the state troopers, we're meeting with the Fairbanks Resource Agency.
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce. There's about a dozen different meetings with a dozen different groups that care about what's going on in Fairbanks. All of them are advocates for whatever their lane is. And, you know, like I said, we've been meeting, we accumulate this data, we take it together, and staff and all of us combine it when we go down to Juneau, so we're prepared as a delegation. And we'll continue to do that. So if it's on the list, we're more, we're more likely to make sure that it gets on the list and gets before the governor's eyes. And that's sort of an important thing. I'll also say that it's important because we're a bipartisan delegation. We've got Democrats and Republicans, and we've worked together despite some of our differences pretty well, actually, honestly, pretty well. We get along pretty well, so.
Does that mean you can't insert that into the budget for Fairbanks?
If it's on the list of a group here in, if it's either in the city or the borough list, we generally support those types of things because we know that it comes from local, like their local stakeholders or their local communities. Yes.
The Warming Shelter specifically is a private entity, it's a nonprofit, but it's a private one, so it's not possible for, like, to the operating budget for legislators to put that specific thing in there. That community revenue sharing that I was talking about before, that the city used to get eight million, now gets 80,000. Those are things that, you know, don't allow, when those dollars go down, it restricts our opportunity to distribute grants, to help with things like that. Whether we have the powers, like we don't at the borough, or the city does, that loss of revenue is ways that we are then not able to distribute out into the local needs that we see. The health and social, the health and safety community match and block ramp is another thing at the state level that is distributed to local municipalities. That's also come down in recent years. That is another way for entities to give out different funds or programs, like the Warming Shelter specifically. It's difficult for the legislature to give those specific dollars to specific entities. You sort of need to drive it through programs that can then get to the local governments that can then distribute it as needed.
Maybe if we do something like the Alex Hotel in Anchorage, where the city actually has the Alex Hotel for the people that are homeless, homeless, I should say, or like the more homeless. But if we could do something like that, copy that city with the Hotel Alex in Anchorage, that would be great. So it don't have to be privatized, or it doesn't have to be about profit, it could be the city that can be doing that. All we, we have a lot of good friends in Anchorage, so let's do it.
Keep an eye out for that survey for what you enjoy.
Thanks, Bobby. Julia?
My question is, it's today came out in the news that Governor Denny Lee has approved our National Guard to go down to help with ice. What powers do you have as a community to understand that communities support one another? What powers do you have as a legislature to push back on seeing our National Guard go out of our state to assist with possible illegal importations of national guard?
Thank you for the question, Julia. I'll start by saying that when we saw the typhoon Halong on the western coast of the state, we were getting non-stop text messages from the disaster response team at the National Guard. Non-stop, we were getting them, because we knew when they were going to get in there, when they were going to help people, when they were going to help extricate folks who were stranded in the middle of cold inclement weather. That's what the National Guard should be doing. I just came back, National Guard is patrolling around Washington DC in these, they're being pulled over from every state. And I just think that's a terrible use of Alaskan support. It's not, I think, what they really wanted to do, and not really what they're supposed to do. But that said, I, I think, I don't know how to address that other than that the Joint Armed Services Committee, the legislature of which myself and Representative DiBert are on, recently sent letters to the governor to tell him, don't do it. Don't get engaged, do not send troops across. They actually had asked to bring troops to the southern border in Mexico. And it was going to take people from their homes and people from their lives all summer long so that they could have this whole road show of soldiers that are just sitting there patrolling the southern borders, which didn't make any sense to us here in Alaska because these are folks that are our neighbors. And we can continue to do that. Joint Armed Services Committee's had several hearings on the matter. We plan on having more as soon as we get back in Juneau and January. And we can do things where we can prevent the governor from, we can zero out budgets, and we can zero out particular programs within the line, in the budget, so that it prevents him from spending money to do those things. And that's really what our work is.
Yeah, Julie, I just wanted to, thank you. I just wanted to add on to that that my colleague, our colleague in the House, Rep. Gray, who is a co-chair of Joint Armed Services and really has done a great job of having committee hearings in the interim. He's had two this summer, and that is in the right direction, where we talk about on public these incidences. And he's made it loud and clear that, he stated that this is inappropriate behavior for our National Guard to be, you know, like, they should be helping us in other ways.
As a National Guard major.
And he is a National Guard major, so shout out to Rep. Gray, not sure if you're watching, but.
Of course he is. We, so we've got a couple more hands up, but what I wanted to do, well, let's take that last hand in the very back because she's had her hand up for a long time. Go ahead.
I'm sure you all know our community is reading just like devastating year of interpersonal and like violence and suicides. And I'm just curious, do you have any plans on the local or state level to address gun violence?
So, okay, well, yeah.
I can help too. Thank you so much for that question, first of all, and for talking about it. I'm sorry, you guys can never hear me. I'll try to talk loudly. I just wanted to note that I'm one of two people, I think, in the legislature right now that has a bill addressing gun violence issues. I have a bill which requires secure storage of firearms if you live with minors in the home and those minors are present in the home. And it's a retroactive bill, so it only applies if there's an investigation post an incident. So it's about as low of a bar as could possibly be set on just basic safety with firearms. There's another sponsor of legislation related to firearms, Representative Josephson. He has a bill that's been around for a long time, Gun Violence Protective Orders. And I would just encourage folks to look into that more if they're interested, but huge, huge hurdles, I won't try to sugarcoat it, there's huge hurdles to working on gun violence as a way to approach the suicide issue and domestic violence issues. Even though, as someone with a master's degree thesis on this exact issue, I can say unequivocally, in a room full of people, that firearms and suicide go hand in hand, and firearms and homicide and domestic violence go hand in hand. It is a really significant, the most significant contributor to the problem of actual suicide completion, which, I'm trying to say this in like the most politically correct terms, but the long story short is, it's terrible what's happened in our communities. I also just wanted to note on that, that this last year, the Tribal Affairs Committee that Representative DiBert chairs, we had a phenomenal, I sit on that committee, we had a phenomenal presentation on a model called Sources of Strength. And it's being used in western Alaska, which has some of the highest rates of youth mental health issues and suicide. And that's another way to attack the problem, is to try to be really proactive about mental health. And that model is showing amazing success in some of these really small communities in Alaska. So just wanted to note that while I'm completely acknowledging the problem of gun violence specifically, the legislature as a whole is concerned about the underlying mental health issue, and is, we're still trying to find ways to approach it that will be successful.
Just because you brought it up, we have amazing sources of strength for our schools.
Yes, we do.
They are year over year losing funding. And my, I'm a coordinator for Fairbanks Wellness Coalition, we try to supplement that funding. But like, when we cut education funding, you're cutting prevention funding as well. So I just wanted, since you brought it up, go ahead.
Thank you.
So one of the things that Mayor Hopkins and I, along with Mayor Teresh, have talked about is a tri-mayor crime summit, where we are talking about these crime issues, and we're talking about the underlying issues. Today I had a meeting with the DA, and he's talking about a program that he's working on with state troopers and local minors called the School Violence Prevention Program, and bringing that into our schools. He's seeing a higher rate of youth violence. We're seeing more guns, we're seeing more domestic violence and substance use in schools, and we're seeing more youth being incarcerated because of those things. So we, as the three mayors, identify that this is a growing issue and a problem that needs a collective voice, not only just to talk about it, but to set goals as a community and how we are going to address it, and then a plan and how we're going to get there in a certain amount of years. So watch for that, and if you're interested, Paige, we'd love to have you help us with that too.
And I will just try to add one minute, Senator, because this is near and dear to my heart, as an educator for over two decades in just working with youths. And one thing that I learned in the legislature is that there are many schools, and I know it's important, my counselor in my school was helpful to so many students, and also helpful to me. Like, after school, I would go there and get counseling. Counselors are very important in our communities and in our schools. And I've learned that there are many schools that don't have a counselor. There, if they do need a counselor, they have to meet on Zoom, and the counselor could change the next week. And when you are with 11-year-olds, 12-year-olds, whatever age, that's not fair. And so, and I want to end with my number one priority, it goes back And so, and I want to end with my number one priority, it goes back to funding education. I know we did a historical funding in August 2nd, but we need to continue to get funding in our schools. So they need additional inflation, adjusted increases in education funding again this year for the, for that reason. And I also wanted to say, my colleague, it's a long day, from Anchorage, Galvin, Representative Galvin is in finance, she has a bill to fund mental health and curriculum in our schools. So that would be great, so.
And then, before we close, just to end, there is, there's also senate counterparts, there's house counterparts on those bills. Senator Tobin has a bill related to gun violence protective orders and so she's been working on it for years. It's in the committee that I chair, so I imagine that it'll go out at some point in time. I'll just say I'm not 100% sure if it works or not, but I'll be willing to listen to folks that have comments about it. Before we close, I'll just say we're going to stay a little bit, we'll stay afterward so folks can talk and chat. There's drinks and beverages and cookies. We're going to, I'll announce the tickets here shortly. I'll just say if anybody wants to close and has a one-minute close, brevity, Representative Pross.
Yes, well, I want to thank Senator Kawasaki and Rep. DiBert for providing this opportunity and thank all of you for coming out. Key point, keep an open mind. Do let us know what you're thinking. It can start out with an email. If you do email us, do put your residence address so we can tell where you live and as extra credit, if you could put a phone number in there because it's a lot easier to respond to individual emails usually with a phone call than trying to write out an email. So do that, keep an open mind, work together, we'll get through it.
Thank you, everybody, for coming to the Borough and the Library. We have wonderful facilities here and this is one of our, that is almost free to the public. So if you do have a nonprofit that's throwing an event in any of our borough facilities that have the ability to waive rental fees for many of them to make sure you get the full support of what you need. Our borough is starting internships for high school kids next semester hopefully. If you've got a kid that wants to get credit and paid for work that they come and do at the borough, look for that opportunity. We're doing job shadows for kids that need to do programs. We've got an eighth grader in our mayor's office right now doing a job shadow all week. And we started up our citizens academy. I see a couple graduates from that. If you want to learn about what the borough does, that's going to be open in August for an eight-week course and the city's been doing it for a while and we wanted to follow suit. Thank you, everybody, everybody for being borough residents.
Thank you. I would just echo what Mayor said. Thank you for showing up tonight. I will just end, I forgot to mention this in my beginning speech, we need help, the legislature's starting January 21st. I have three bills that I'm working very hard on that I hope to pass and that's House Bill 52, Protection of Children in Psychiatric Hospitals, House Bill 162, a right to repair bill, which would make companies supply the parts and the instructions to fix the things that we buy like dryers and dishwashers. It's a really good bill. And House Bill 12, which would provide universal free school breakfast and lunch for public school children. Thank you. And please reach out to my office if you would like to help with any of those bills and getting them moved forward. Just email me, rep maxine diBert at akledge.gov. Thank you again so much for being here and sharing your thoughts. Thank you. I think that's what we just heard was an announcement that the library is closing at eight, so we all need to vacate this room at eight o'clock. And by 7:45, we need to be out of the room, the building shuts down at eight. So as somebody who represents workers, I think that's very important. But I will take my minute. And this is, and this is what I have to say. Local government is the closest government to the people. And you may not live in our city, but you're here right now. Every day, the city increases by three times. We have 30,000 people that live here and every day we almost expand to 90,000 people. That sounds, that sounds big, but it's true. So please pay attention to what happens at the city council because what we're doing, particularly with downtown, particularly with our houselessness population, has a great impact on the rest of the, the rest of the borough. And we're working really hard to ensure that we are the brightest light in this state. And I know it's because of the people in this room. So thanks for being here.
I heard auto starts going off, so I'll be really quick. If you had comments for the state legislators that are here or other members of the Interior delegation, I just want to shout out another opportunity to connect with us before session. On December 8th from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, I'll say that again in a second, we are going to have an open house of our Legislative Information Office and many, if not most of the members of the Interior delegation and definitely their staff will be there. So it's an open house. We also will have the Legislative Information Office open, which is your resource for year-round information about legislative work, proceedings, what to do, who to contact, all of that good stuff. So again, that's December 8th, 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM at 1292 Sabre Way, which is the third floor of the Global USA Building across from Home Depot. So it's in the bank on the third floor. Please come visit us anytime. Please come visit us on December 8th and thank you for coming.